All in favor?
I.
Oppose, abstain, motion given. And next, we have some recognitions and presentations, so our practices and procedures, school library.
There we go. Mrs. Hansen and Mrs. Nannan.
Uh huh, that's me.
Yes.
Where do you want us to be?
Oh, this is great.
So we just wanted to come and present to you our revised practice procedures for the high school library. I'm Kathy Nannan and this is Paula Hansen and we worked with the other three district librarians on this. And we wanted to make sure that we had a really nice and updated book of the practices and procedures because it hasn't been updated since 2012. We're going to save it since then, so we felt it was super important to go through and make sure that everything was still as we wanted it to be and to make sure that, you know, we're following current guidelines. So all of this is based on strictly based on the American Library Association, their best practices and their guidelines. So we're not making it up, we're taking it directly from professionals.
So the Salt Lake City Central School District has mission statement and the library has a mission statement that mirrors that and supports that throughout the entire process of our procedures, Dr. We, thank you. We also have some of the highlights of our of our mission statement are to explore ideas and information through inquiry. That it's a balanced and diverse collection to meet the needs. That it's safe and inviting. Our academic environment is safe and inviting and that the students will hopefully become independent, responsible, lifelong learners and avid readers.
So we have some goals from the pre-K through 12 libraries that this is consistent throughout. One of the things is we want to make sure that we're providing intellectual and physical access to information. Kids have to be able to access information in all of our libraries. We want to teach kids to be discriminating consumers of information. You want to make sure that they just that they question everything and they use their critical thinking skills. And we wanted to do that by making sure that they have credible information in our libraries. We want to encourage lifelong learning and for information and for recreation, right? Some some kids will be lifelong readers for fun and some kids are only going to do it for information, but we want to make sure that they have the ability to do both. And we want to make sure that they know how to access the resources in order to make sure that they can get the information they need for anything they need at any point in time. Whether it's in our physical library or out on the world wide web. Okay, the next thing is the confidentiality of patron web records. Everything that we do in the library is compliant with that law 2D and that's the most important thing. That we don't do anything that's not compliant with that law.
Inner library loans. This basically extends the collection that we have in-house to other surrounding area libraries. So that doesn't necessarily mean public libraries. It basically means school libraries. But from all kinds of different districts and regions around the area. And not only can we borrow from them, but they can also borrow from us and that really benefits our students and our overall our patrons being teachers and staff, et cetera.
So selection of materials is one of the biggest things that we do as librarians. We have to make sure that we're getting good materials into our libraries for our students and our staff. And so we have a philosophy about that and it has to support the educational needs of our students. Has to support our curriculum and it has to support what our teachers are trying to teach and it needs to support all of the interests that our students might have. So not only should they be able to walk into the library and find something that they need for class, they should also be able to find something that is interesting to them. And that is that is mirrors and windows is what we call it. So they need to be able to see themselves reflected in the collection as well as they need to be able to see other people and other people's lives reflected in the collection.
How this plays out in a procedure is very different because there's no way that we can read all of the books that are available in the library to decide that those fit into the library. So just as Mrs. Nana mentioned at the very beginning, we rely heavily on the American Library Association guidelines in order to give us those practices. And we also rely on other reputable professionals and their reviews and other vendors that give us specific reviews. They compile that information. And that's how we make our decisions as to what fits within our collection.
So that works while we do find that somebody thinks that a material in our library needs to be reconsidered. And if that's the case, we do have a policy for it or a procedure for it. It's outlined in in this book. And if somebody comes to somebody in the district with a material they'd like to have reconsidered, a policy or a procedure is outlined and we can get into place without causing big chaos kind of thing.
Copyright. We've all heard about copyright. You all recognize the symbol for copyright. We all need to be much more mindful of copyrights. It's a really tricky situation, especially when you're trying to provide materials for students. So copyright is a major part of the the only real policy that's actually in this manual that we created and it is a very specific law and so we need to be more aware of it.
So circulation, that's a process of students and faculty checking books out from the library. There's a lot of things that happen in the background for this and basically we have outlined in the document how things are circulated now, who can borrow what and for how long, so that it's consistent and is fair for everybody.
Up here you'll see the bulging points of basically the job description of the library media specialist. These are all this. This looks like a pretty quick list, but when you look at the real background of all of this that you are collaborating, that you are supporting, that you are not only are you procuring the information that's going to be given out to the patrons and library, the books and the materials and those kinds of things. You're also managing it all. We're weeding through. We are doing inventories. We are this summer, we're going to be genrefying our collection to make it a little bit more user friendly. This is a heavy duty job description. So when you come into the library, you might think, oh, it's just quiet. We're reading books. Nope. We've got a lot going on. Ask us. We'd be happy to help you with that.
So is this the person that get there was request for certain materials that go to the library?
Absolutely.
Media specialist and say, hey, is there any way we can get this? And then you've got that and then either add it or not add it collection.
Yes. And it's a little bit different because if you've got different departments that are doing things, they would be ordering that out of their own budget. Ours is for general consumption for building.
Okay.
So for each of the buildings, prospects, and I've got a high school, we're ordering for the building for the patrons in there. We have absorbed some multiple copies of texts when people have left the classroom, when when Magara left the classroom, she had all the books in her room. And we didn't have enough room for storage in her room. It came into the back office of the back hallway. Thank you. And we put those into cabinets and we got those all organized and cataloged now as if they're part of our collection, but they were bought by district funds or departments. So we do house some of those things. We don't want to house all of them.
Right.
What we do, we have come across those, but ours are specifically for general use. Okay, thank you.
The teacher assistant in my library is a hugely important position because this person is the person that allows the librarian to do her job. And that's super important. The librarian cannot be collaborating if there's nobody else in the library to make sure that kids are accounted for, to check books in and out, to shell books, to do all of those tasks that you see listed here. If our librarian is stuck doing those things all day, she can't do the more important part of collaborating and the education. So that's a hugely important piece. And the the job description is outlined during this procedure. And finally, we have a lovely assortment of appendices in this file. Should you want to cruise them, there are on there's some of the forms on reconsideration is there. There's restriction forms should parents choose to ask that their children be restricted from certain items. That's certainly their right. They may find that a form and give that to them. There's the guidelines that we talked about for circulation and then there's information on copyright and fair use. It is extremely intriguing reading. I definitely recommend that you do it if you haven't. What kind of questions do you have?
I just want to say I've been on the board for a while and I've never had a library presentation. So it was very nice and it explains a lot of what you do and I I don't want to say you're in the forgotten world, but sometimes you are. And it's appreciated on what you do and kind of way that you let it try to provide to the staff and students and the community as a whole. So I just want to say thank you. I don't know if anybody else says anything.
So I had the opportunity to work with librarians in a variety of different districts and my experience is that these are some of the most strong willed individuals. And very rarely don't have an opinion on things. But we should really be proud of the library media specialists that we have and particularly these two ladies here because putting something together like that they what they've done and what they've updated isn't something that has to happen, right? This isn't part of your annual, you have to do this. But it is part of what we do to make sure that we have clear understandings of the roles, responsibilities of what makes up a collection and how items are chosen and what the purpose of them is for. And they really have done a terrific job, which, you know, goes without saying, if you know these two individuals, because anything that they produce is outstanding. So I wanted to just extend my gratitude for the work that you did, not only with this, but that you do every day for our students.
Yes, thank you. Next, we have our augmented reality sandbox, jazz mask and road.
All right. Have you gone on a field trip?
This is a field trip. You're gonna have to hold hands, go down the hallway quietly. Don't touch things on the line. It's all down. It's all set up down in the stem wing.
Okay.
We have an augmented reality sandbox and a couple of the demonstrations I'd like to do with the STEM.
Terrific. We can all go on a field trip.
Now you're gonna be tempted to stop and look at things and they're out, but.
If you need something to yell at the camera, I'll help you out.
All right, say it. Just yell at the camera.
Absolutely. Hey Graham, can you unmute yourself?
I can't hear.
Hey, Dr. Hayes, can you unmute yourself, please?
Thank you. Is that better? Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Murdered missing indigenous women project that my GIS class had put together a couple of years ago, I wanted to share with you. And then something that we're just finishing up, we're still playing with is a road roughness project for our earth science and computer science students. And of course it won't work with the mouse here. There you go. Right. All right. So the augmented reality sandbox was developed by a guy at UC Davis called Oliver Krallows, developed this thing under a NS NSF grant to make science cool and approachable. So this was a project that was researched, suggested and equipped by Cole Johnson before he graduated. He said, you know, I think it would be really cool if we made one of these things. And he contributed the Xbox controller up there and he had a he had a lightweight projector that wasn't. So we got one from the district for this, but this is the project and the software and all is downloaded from this guy. And this was built by Cole and I. We we built the thing. I did most of the woodwork stuff. He did all the programming and setup configuration. Unfortunately, he left before we got it all fine tuned. So Kobe Kennedy, great kid. He helped finalize the configuration of the device and getting it all worked and calibrated and all that stuff. So we is good, we is good. And it's hosted and housed by Cheryl Johnson. She's given up space in the middle of this room for this. She was just telling me today that had a sixth grade class coming. She said, it was great. She said, I spread it all out. So we have a little packet of maps, laminated map of real life department. And so she showed the kids one map or an image devil's power in my own, basically a big pile of a grant or not grant, it's all anyhow. And the kid said, okay, well, it's flat over here. And she's he was just thrilled that they built this thing on a sand and she's showing him a picture of it on the wall. And so the idea is we empower the kids to look at a map and try to figure this out. As a earth science teacher, I have struggled for kids hard time going from a paper map that's flat to a 3D visualization. So this is our augmented reality sandbox and it's just been absolutely loved by everybody. There's one kid who does like to get lovers loved out or latex loved out, so she can play with it. But if you would all like to come up and take a look at this, we'll close it. Come on, don't be afraid. And the sand, I dampened the sand to make it. So you guys know that if you were to make it up on a sand apple and you stack it up, you'll see the contours get moving really close together on a sheet of paper. So we have this. So this, what's going on is the Xbox controller says, hey, I can see this. I can see objects. And the final sand is an object. And so then it transfers that down to the computer hanging underneath this thing through geographic information system, my passion and said, okay, I can represent that. I can pick some colors. I can put some contours on here and show you stuff. So I would encourage you all to dig around and see how the hillside change. And then the other absolute bizarre thing is if I hold my hand out like this, it will cause my rain. And so you can have the kids make canyons. Okay, well, let's see what happens here. That was a wonderful gap. Thank you.
It's very severe.
One of the kids for Mr. Hapolt's history project discovered this and said, ooh, I can model it. And so he formed this under here with the lights and said, okay, it's a picture of new stuff out of the wall, out of the hallway. So I I kind of passed to have both the weeded stuff up so you guys could see it all, especially that one. But, you know, so it's we're, but you can see now, the one thing I don't, one thing I don't like about the water, I have never seen water do this in a, in a pot, but it will, so it'll show you where your where your water is and I can, I can make it rain off of there. So it's just a cool thing. The kids love it. It's very fun. And so I just want to thank you guys for for supporting this, for funding this project. It took forever. We had, we had so many. But so one night Cole said, he said, okay, we were having problems because I think, I think I could rewrite this. I said, oh, Cole, don't rewrite this. You know, this this guy took years to build this thing. He went home, came back the next day and said, I reloaded. Now, it's, we still couldn't get it to work with the with the with the computer, the operating system that we had. So it was kind of a waste of, well, not a waste of time. Really, we'll figure it out soon. So we have great credit to him. We're all.
The other strength was.
Kobe, Kobe Kennedy helps me do the final calibration. The one, the one piece of equipment that would, I mean, this is one wrapped off with ceiling in my room, I think. But there this, there are projected called low throw projectors, which would fill up the gap. You can see it doesn't quite fit in the box. So a little throw projector was probably not making even. But we, these are really popular in life in museums all over the place. One down in Buffalo, I take my grandkids there and and drive them away from it. So hang on. He goes, come on, get your hands dirty. Wander a little bit, but you know, it's okay. It didn't get to the idea. So anyhow, I just want to thank you for that. And now on to the next topic. Okay. Missing and murdered indigenous women and girls. As an attempt to raise awareness of this tragic problem, and I realize that I sadly can't do anything about this. I just can't imagine. I tell my students, I can't imagine laying down at night, putting my head on the pillow, knowing that somebody in my family is missing. My mom, my sister, my mother-in-law, well, maybe one, no, no, my mother-in-law or, you know, but but that there is somebody missing. And this was a project created by my GIS students a couple of years ago, Lena Harper and Ian Brazil. Two years and just to raise awareness of this problem. So geographic information system is what my my specialty is. It's a database and a map combined so that I can display stuff on a map, point to it, click a click and get the database to tell me the information for it. It's wildly popular. And it's so anyhow, I was searching for I was, I'm a member of the of a group called the Native GIS. And I asked them, hey, is there a, is there a single repository of this information regarding the murder missing indigenous women? And they said, no, not really. And I looked around and asked a bunch of people, couldn't find it. There was none. So I did find a federal database called NAMU S, which has missing persons, 24,000 plus. And I will, I'm sorry to lighten the background. Hold on, that's now hiding my. Hold on, we'll get there. Sorry. So this NAMU S database has it's, it's covering up all the good information. All right, there we go. 24,000 missing persons in the US recorded, reported. There's probably errors in the database, but if you go in here and say, well, this is kind of set up. If you have an inkling of somebody that's missing, you can type in information about their whereabouts, their ethnicity, their weight, their condition, the situation, the circumstances that caused them to go missing. But I also found that I can click on American Indian, Alaska native, female. So right there, there's 867 reported missing indigenous peoples. If I click on female, we're down to 274 possible results. And in this, there is a let me hit the search. Okay, so it comes up with a list of the 274 listing. There's also a map in their system that is really kind of useless. Sorry, from a cartographer map guy, it's a useless map. It's, this is what's called a heat map and it shows you where the where the highest populate, you know, so there's 216 people within this undefined block. One person out in Hawaii, 57 in Alaska. So as I zoom in, it starts to get me a little more detail, but not very effective. So I said, ah, this would be great for my GIS. So in one moment, I hope it will draw here for us. Come on, Greg, come on, come on, you do it. I'm sorry, the lighting the background makes it tough to. Really is a cool map when we see it. Let me try going to my gallery. About, these are all the projects that my students have have built. And you'll look for. I'm sorry. Don't want to use up time. The 24 one is the better one. We've had sort of built different variations on this over time. Up another one? Yep, there you go. Thank you. Thank you. Open a map here. Okay, sorry. Trying to be conscious of the time. Ah, snap. Okay, well, fitting. Not enough memory. Take note. Ah, shoot. Okay. Well, it allowed you to verbal description of a map. This doesn't work. Pictures worth a thousand words and a map is worth even more and I can all have a thousand words. Okay, let's see. Let's go back to the gallery and, okay, so you can kind of see here the dots are a little more reflective. And so I, my students took the data, I looked at it. What were the age that the kids went missing? These people went missing, some as young as two. And you know, they didn't wander off by themselves. That may have been a family dispute or it may have been a, you know, hostile. And there are, there are women who went missing when they were 67. They would be 100 now if they were, I mean, it's, it's tragic. It's really kind of heartrending to to see all this. Ms. Wolf came into my my class one time for showing me this and she goes, oh, and she gave me a name of the student. And we looked it up and found where the girl had gone missing. She, it was a former student of Rachel Wolf's. And it's like, it gets a little more personal when we, when we see that. The good good news is there aren't any people missing around New York. Well, there's one, one from Buffalo and one from Long Island that is that is reported missing. So but nobody from from our area of the woods. Sorry, I'm squinting into the sun here. Come on, Greg. Come on, you can do it. All right. So we extracted the records for the Native American and Alaska native women, girls. Again, just to raise awareness of what this, again, I as a, as an individual, I can't do anything more than that. So. Again, just to raise awareness of what this, again, I, as a, as an individual, I can't do anything more than that. So. But it, it gave some incentive to some of my students to go beyond and take on other social matters.
Now, did you share your math with uh, Nama?
No, no, no. I gotta say, ours is fine. So I didn't, I didn't try to do that. Um, okay. Then the last one, the road roughness project. All right. As you are aware, see if this will come up here for us. Come on, come on. I found you've all, you've all felt the jolt of your fillings coming out and everything else as you're driving your car. So I found a bunch of memes and they won't even come up for me. Shoot, it says in England, they drive on the left. Where I come from, we drive on what's left. So, okay, enough, enough humor. So back to, and I hope this, I hope this works. Okay, good. Here's, so the idea was for my earth science students, you know, we always get the, when am I ever going to use this in my real life? So hey, guys, ever, you ever had your teeth rattle as you drove home on the bus? Yeah. Okay. You notice those potholes getting bigger as the season goes on and then they pave them and it's all beautiful again? What's causing that? It's free stop. Water gets in, water expands. That's why ice floats because it's less dense. And that it just wrecks, wrecks our roads. So let's look at where our, our highways are ruled. So what we did is we took these tablets, I had the kids drop them off in the bus, put them in the glove box of the bus when they went home. They went home, they came back to the bus garage. I met them at the bus garage, took the devices, had my students then download the data, do a little bit of Excel processing on it, load it into the GIS, and now we have this sort of hideous looking map right now. I don't have, I don't have all the streets. So the, the students down here have not been, been picked up yet or recorded. But I figured the easiest way to do this is just have the buses go out. And that's a good way to raise awareness too of, you know, why is my bus always breaking down? Well, it could be the roads are in really lousy shape. And if you're going to repair the roads, do it here. Here I can show you the places that it's the worst. So, um, let me just zoom in. So the idea is the dots are set up, the green dots being your roads pretty smooth. Yellow, eh, a little bit of rough, orange is getting rougher, red, ah, I know. So it's, it's more tragic. So here's, here's a prospect. And we can kind of see.
That is actually the pain today.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. It's beautiful. That's fine. I'm so happy. They must have heard I was doing this presentation. So we can run it again and, and now put a timeline to this thing to say, see what it was like three months ago? And now it's all beautiful and smooth and we can ride along. So, but this is what, what goes on and we have the, uh, the bus numbers and this is set up so that we've, we've removed the coefficient of gravity, nine point eight zero six, six, five meters per second squared. So it's not measuring, you know, because we're all feeling that all the time. We're feeling, you're feeling the gravity of the situation right now, right? Sure. So we can, we can look at this stuff and say, well, this is, green is good. Yellow is, eh, and, and so here it's showing us the gravitational force and each of the buses that we've collected as to what they're, what they're doing. And there's, there's, so I'm going to be may or may not know, I'm going to be retiring. I've already talked to another teacher about taking this over. So legacy project, keep going with this. And the other part, the other part that I've done that I haven't quite I've gotten soil data, soil surveys, and I want to do an analysis of these things to say, okay, let's superimpose using the GIS, the location of the potholes, their, their severity and the soil type they're in. Is there any correlation? Is there a specific soil type that tends to have support or promote potholes more than another? Or is it just the pavement? Or is it just our driving or, you know, whatever? So I figured might as well give it a shot. Let's do science. And if we come out with eh, nothing, okay. But we may have a cool process in the, in the meantime. So anyhow, that's what I wanted to show you tonight. I think that was it, wasn't it? Yeah. And now still not enough memory. Ah, shoot. I wonder if I kill all these other things. Okay, okay, okay. So so what I've done is, is the same layer, but represented differently. So here is the, the heat map. Here. So you can see Oklahoma, New Mexico and Seattle, the North Pacific Northwest are the hotspots. Higher population of Native Americans and sadly, that's where the abundance of missing people are reported. So as you zoom in, you get to see more, more detail, kind of like the other map, but not such in, you know, I, I haven't lost the context. So we click on this, I just, I mistakenly clicked on this. This is a, a missing age fourteen, age today, fourteen years away, zero. So this was like when they, this was made, well, it's back in twenty twenty-two. So it's, she would be sixteen years old and sixteen years away. So this is showing the, her name, her native tribe and where she was last noted. So we can kind of click on that to get, and this is one out of nine. So where I clicked, there were nine people, individuals there. So this was the heat map. If I click on the missing age, the larger the dot, the older the individual, the smaller the dot, the younger the girl. And you can kind of see them sort of stacked on top of each other in places. This is just using town name as the address to, to geocode to. This is number of years away that they've been gone. Again, the larger the dot, the longer the age this individual, this one up here. Years away, thirty-eight years, missing age, she went missing at fifty-seven. She would be ninety-five today if she was born. That just, that just hurts. This woman is went missing at age thirty-eight, sixty-two years ago would be a hundred today. So that's the, that's kind of the, the project. And then the, the other one would be, uh, age, age today. Sort of the same thing, but just a, a different slant or different slice of looking at the data to get that full in that. So that's, that's, that's the project. I've had a couple students come in to interview me about this and I said, yeah, here, you look at the data, you, you poke around at it, see what you, see what you find. And, uh, and they, they hopefully they come away a little more aware and, uh, ready to roll. So I will stop sharing and hustle back to the, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Hey, you're welcome.
Enjoyed that presentation. That was really cool. We are going on the communication. Do we have anybody? What about turtle sex? Do you have any turtle sex? Okay. Then we will move on to, uh, central office method.
I don't believe so. She's tied up with a board meeting from ASL.
Okay. And we'll, Dr. Condo, do anything for us?
I do. Oh, I'd like to share with everybody that, um, we are working on our restored practices here. Um, we have an education team that is building. And Lacyville, Catherine Rogers and Stet Olgo worked with the trainer and I this week, last week. And, um, we're working to make building, this is a difficult book, possibly building, so that we actually see it alive in the world and, um, something that's visible. That's what we're working on right now. Visibility, we're working on visibility. Um, we also have an expert literacy development trainer in town. She was there for three days, her name was Kelly Went, and she's working with a primary teacher team. And, um, today, I think it's fun to watch her actually modeling with, uh, three kindergarten children of ours. And the teachers, the whole team, the kindergarten team was in the room and she was modeling a lesson with these new materials that we're already using. And, um, just helping teachers think a little differently about their practice and supporting our children. Think critically, more productive struggle and, um, it's just supposed to be a great enhancement for literacy development. We're starting in early childhood and moving up toward, um, middle school and high school. We also did some work with our NWBA facilitator that is, um, one of the assessments that we use to, um, to show our children's progress and their growth. And this facilitator is helping us to give you to some of the different features that it has. We actually just found one that, um, we want to implement, um, over the summer. We're going to use it in our summer school and then hopefully pilot over the summer, see how it works and then use it in the fall. And, uh, there was a tour with, uh, Mr. Jason Gish from I Said, um, spearheaded by Earl and Sandy Brundage. She took, um, Jason through, um, all our childhood buildings, um, here in the nation. It was a huge success. He just loved Salomea and there wasn't anything that we said. He said, oh no, I feel my boss all the time. Uh, they're modeling everything. They're modeling everything in their, uh, in their office from Salomea is, uh, work here. So photos to everybody working hard in early childhood and how we integrate Santa history, language and culture across all our buildings. And lastly, we continue to build our summer programming to meet the needs of all our students and go working on these real instruction plans for everyone. And, um, really a, in a good, good part of the planning stage now, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Dr. Condo? All right. And then we'll move on to the board message. Christian, you want to start us off?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Gary. Um, good to see everyone tonight. I, um, hope everyone's doing well. First off, I'd like to thank our presenters tonight, Mrs. Hanson, Mrs. Mannen, Dr. Hayes. Thank you. Very informative. Everybody's, um, presentations were very informative and I learned a few things from each one of them. So thank you very much for your hard work to put all that together. To the students, I would like to wish you all the best of luck uh, with your recent exams and finals as you continue to push to the end of the school year here. And, um, to utilize our support staff and doing any last minute higher ed and college applications, um. If any of our high school students are interested in working this summer, I encourage you to start applying. And, um, yeah, using some of the resources, whether it's here at the school, the nation, you know, just anywhere online, if anybody can help. Read out, there's all kinds of opportunities out there. And, uh, lastly, I just want to touch on, uh, last night's award ceremony. I had a tremendous honor to be able to attend that. And, um, thank you everyone to help put that on. It was, uh, really great to be a part of. Hey, come on, man, I got a touchdown event. And, um, no, it was really good, you know, all jokes aside, it was a great turnout last night and, uh, I just want to congratulate all the, the students and their families and, you know. That's it. So thank you very much. Sorry, Dad. We should, we should switch spots.
Um, I pretty much wanted to say everything that Christian said, uh, welcome to students and the, it's June fourth. We've got that many days before, um, school is over and summer is here. So, um, work hard and turn in all your assignments that you're all.
Yeah, I, I'm left with, uh, thanks everybody for coming out on a beautiful day. The, uh, we don't have too many more meetings, like they said before, uh, graduation. The, uh, that's within, it's almost basically four weeks away. Um, school year flew and just, uh, all the, all our students and stuff, the, you know, final push when the weather is nice and you don't want to be here, but it's only a few more weeks away and then summer will begin and so everybody, uh, good luck on the tests upcoming and all that stuff. And, uh, that's about all I have left.
Yeah, pretty much same thing. Just, just a good luck to all the seniors that are, that are graduating, um, this year. Um, it's a big push every year, like, like they were saying, buckle down, get those assignments in and you know, um, get all your time in for board meetings. But, um, I just wish everybody the best of luck. Um, it's about what, three and a half weeks, I think. So feel the great weight. So, and, um, regions. I think there was one exam started already. Was it Matt? Super. But I just want to, uh, say thanks for coming out tonight. See you next, next board meeting.
Gary?
Hey, as always, thank you all. Staff, everybody, you know, thank you for everything you're doing. Uh, thank you for putting in all the hard work for this entire school year. Um, times it wasn't easy, but you guys do what you do. You make it look easy every single day. Um, you know, my appreciation to all of you. Uh, students, buckle down. We're almost there. Uh, end of the year is coming. Seniors really buckle down. You know, this is, this is coming up to end of an era here for you, you know, end of a high school career. So do everything you need to, make sure you get everything done, turning your work, finish strong. Um, yeah, I wanted to touch on last night's, um, awards banquet over at the casino that, that was our eighth banquet. I've been to, I think, at least seven of them. I think I did this a year. Uh, great event. Always a great event. Always well attended, you know, and it's, it's awesome to see, you know, the kids. You know, and it's it's awesome to see, you know, the kids get the awards and, you know, I really, I really like the speeches that everyone gives too. You know, a lot of them are just so heartfelt. You know, they talk about these students like they're their own kids and it's awesome to see. So that was a pretty good, that was a pretty good ceremony last night. Appreciate that every single year. Other than that, enjoying the weather. Let's go. Couple more weeks. Yeah.
Couple more weeks. Yes, I also want to welcome everyone tonight. And I know kids want to keep it short, playing, and I make my spiel like my normal. Uh, again, if you see something or you need something, don't be afraid to reach out, you know. Like everybody here said, we are almost at graduation. So if you're seniors or if you're facing tasks and you start to feel overwhelmed, don't be afraid to reach out because we can help. You know, we don't want anybody getting too stressed out. You can always talk to the adult to find out if there's work that's old. We're always here to try and help. Because that's what we do. We want to see everybody be successful. So don't try to keep things inside. If you're feeling overwhelmed, please reach out and talk to somebody. Because we have tons of services that are available and sometimes this type of year can, with all the different testing, people can start to feel a little overwhelmed. So please, don't let yourself get to that point and don't feel that you can't ask for help because that's that's why we're here. And I am looking forward to graduation and I want to see everybody graduate so I can sit there and shake everybody's hand, tell them good luck and congratulations. So I do love graduation. The other thing I did want to say is thank you to the community for passing the budget, approving all of the initiatives that the board has. Even though Brad's not here tonight, you know, congratulations to him. Thank you again for voting for me. Because we do want to keep things going and it's nice to know that we have a community that is behind us and supports us. So thank you again to everybody and thank you to the presenters. Dr. Hayes, we're gonna miss you because you always do bring that unique character to different things. You know, the way I don't think about it. I'm not a sandbox kind of person. I'm more of a numbers person, so I can appreciate that. But the way that you put the data together and present it and get the kids excited, it's really great. Same with our library staff, you know, they look for ways to help engage the kids and that's what we want. You know, we want our kids engaged because we want them to be here because if the kids are here, you're going to be successful. So thank you to everybody, just like Carrie said, you know, our teachers and our staff, I don't care if it's bus drivers, cleaners. They go out of the way to embrace our kids. And so thank you because that is what makes Salamander a unique community that we look out for each other's kids and they're not just your kids, they're our kids. So thank you to everybody and I'm gonna turn it over to that.
Thanks. Just a quick one. Just a reminder to everyone that Sunday is the Cindy Moore, I'm just trying to remember what number, just the fourth horse. Four, nine. The fourth annual run walk for Cindy Moore at Betts Park at nine o'clock. And then just wanted to acknowledge, we've had quite the sports season this year. And Chad will be providing a update. He didn't know that just yet, but he just found out as far as a lot of the successes that our teams have had. So we performed last week because of a sectional playoff game for our women's lacrosse. And just wanted to state and congratulate them on an absolutely terrific season. It wasn't that long ago when I, Mr. John, brought it forward through the Indigenous Education Committee and the Indian Policies and Procedures, a request to start girls' lacrosse. And here we are, not much longer later with a sectional playoff and an absolutely outstanding, although relatively wet and cold game. And it was a really good season and, you know, I do want to acknowledge our, not only our athletes, but our coaches as well, as well as our volunteer coaches. We have quite a few volunteer coaches. And there were a couple of games at the end of the season where it was reaching nine or 10 o'clock at night. And our coaches and athletes might have been still an hour plus away. And there was one game, everything in particular used to work on. And, you know, sometimes we underestimate the amount of time and commitment that it takes for not just our athletes, right? I mean, they go to school all day. They might have a practice and then, you know, they're already game an hour away until nine or 10 o'clock at night. And then they come back the next day and do it all over. But that also goes for coaches and I wanted to just express a thank you to Mr. John because he is a volunteer coach. He does all of that and doesn't get paid. So thank you not only for a great season, but for the work that you do.
Yes. It was wet. It was a very wet game. Oh, no.
That's a great day.
Okay.
The summer.
But we are gonna move on to the consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion. Motion by Christian, second by Tracy. Are there any questions?
I was gonna ask if Karen's not on.
Okay.
Yeah, I see we're losing money consecutively three months now. And our.
I'm going to.
All right, we got a motion by Christian, second by Tracy. All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. We have no old business under new business. We have practices and procedures from the school libraries center. So we need a motion to approve the practices and procedures.
Well, second.
Motion by Ted, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item B is our change order for back electric for $10,862. So we need a motion to approve that allowance distribution.
A change order, I'm sorry. I I just take that wrong. My fault, sorry.
Motion, second.
Motion by Carrie, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
All right. Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item C is our building condition survey contract. That is in the amount of $68,368. With young and right, so we need a motion to approve that contract. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Dale, second by Carrie. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Mark, one of us run down on what we're doing again because it seems like this comes a lot. The building conditions. So we're required by New York State law to, let's say, every five years, have a building condition survey done. And well, that means we hire an architectural firm typically to come and they go through every nook and cranny of the building. And they will rate the condition of, let's say, the roof, the boilers, the water pumps, every system that is in the physical plant of the school district. And we get a report back and then that report is utilized by our facilities manager, so Mr. Kankowski, as well as Karen and myself to begin to forecast and be able to logically budget for improvements that are necessary for the district itself. So that building condition survey that was done about four or five years ago has helped us to identify roofs that need to get done. Uh, we're in the process now of identifying some pumps for the geothermal wells that need to be replaced. And because we know from a third party, and we don't use our own architect because, you know, sometimes if you use your own construction architect folks, they're gonna find problems that, you know, are maybe in their benefit. So because they, we have a third party that puts these together for us. We now have the ability to understand what needs to get replaced, when and where, and we can make a good financial plan for ensuring that we do that in a timely manner.
For all of our schools, not just the high school?
Yep, absolutely. Every every building from the dugouts, literally, there will be pictures to every door, every window. Actually, every nook and cranny. And they will actually associate a dollar value with the current market for what a repair or replace would be, as well as an anticipated lifespan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Then we have a motion by Dale, second by Carrie. All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item B, we have some donations. We have a $500 donation from Seneca Holdings. $500 donation from Timothy Waterman and a $300 donation from the Tilbuck Outlet. They're all for the class of 2027 for the Cindy Moore 5K run. So we need a motion to approve those donations.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Carrie, second by Dale. All in favor?
I.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Well, Mark, you mentioned it earlier, but I just wanted to touch on that. You know, this is this is just some of the amazing support we get from our community and other businesses. And this is just a few of them. I'm pretty sure in the next board agenda, we'll be seeing more. But these donations go to an amazing cause, you know, as a scholarship fund in honor of an amazing woman. But again, this just shows how supportive our community can be. You know, these are just a few. And I think we have several thousand more coming in and donations. Uh, that doesn't even include the people who registered to actually participate in the run walk. So again, this this is funding a scholarship and also helping the class of 2027 fund, you know, their their school needs as well. Uh, the scholarship is going to be set up for years to come. So just one of those things, you know, we appreciate all the support that goes into this. We appreciate our community coming out. If you haven't registered for it, there's still time to register and there'll be day of registrations taking place Sunday morning at Betts Park. So we encourage anybody and everybody to come on down, whether you're a competitive runner, whether you just want to casually run, whether you want to walk it, it really doesn't matter, but just come down and support a great cause. So I just wanted to say that on behalf of the Cindy Moore 5K scholarship.
Yeah, what time does it register? What time does it start again?
Registration starts around 9:00 AM and then the event starts at 10:00.
Okay.
And yours truly is typically the emcee for the event. All that happens.
And you're one and I've been doing it ever since.
I am registered.
Hey.
There you go.
All right.
Thanks, dude.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. We have a motion by Carrie, second by Dale. All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Uh, next we have our S T A, random agreement. And that is away, S T A 2024, Ben, and S T A 2409. Uh, so we need a motion to approve those M O As.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Ted. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item F is to accept some bids for the items that are listed on the agenda. So we need a motion to approve all of the.
Motion.
Motion by Christian, second, second by Tracy. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item G is our Cataragus County District Resource Officer Program Agreement. So we need a motion to approve the S R O contract effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th of 2025. So I want to get motion. Who made that? Ted, yeah, second motion by Ted, second by Dale. All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item eight, A is our personnel consent agenda. Item A B, we need a motion to approve item A A. Motion, motion by Tracy, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. And do we have anyone here that we'd like to introduce or recognize?
Do, actually, Dr. Petrow, you want to go first? All right.
Okay, we are thrilled to announce the permanent appointment of Janelle Owens right here. The confidential secretary, which also coordinates all the professional development for our school district. Um, Janelle has demonstrated exceptional dedication, professionalism and excellence in her role. She has been an invaluable asset to our team. Janelle joined Salamander one year ago. Right away, she was eager to support the workload in the office of the System Superintendent, President of Services. We got a lot going on. You jump right in. Janelle, patient, chilled demeanor, always welcomes our staff, go fire about what they're interested in learning about. And to, as well as how to meet all their requirements, they constantly, what do we need, what about level? One, level two, and she explains everything to her patients, which is wonderful. And this all contributes to all their required courses they need to combine what it means to be a teacher and an educator in Salamander. Those are the really important roles that she, that she holds. She makes our workspace a place we want to come to every day. She's always inviting us to join her in a fancy seat. And she brings Warrior Burger Day to Warrior Academy for us, and she makes sure I eat. Oh, I know, and she doesn't do that. So please join us in congratulating Janelle Owens on this well.
You know, I'm glad you mentioned patience because you were going down the list of characteristics and I was like, but but she's so patient with me, so nice.
We'll be back.
Uh, let's see, Mrs. Hold on.
Thank you, everyone. I've spent awesome pleasure to work with the district this past year and looking forward to years to come. Towards me through all of my career. We'll be here.
Mrs. Dudek, are you able to speak on Mr. Prezy's hat behalf?
Yes, I am. Thank you so much. So I have the honor this evening of talking about Mr. Jerry Prezy. His unwavering commitment to students' welfare and educational achievement is evident throughout his tenure that he's been with us. Jerry has demonstrated a remarkable ability to adapt and innovate, ensuring that the needs of students with diverse learning requirements are met effectively. For those of you that don't know, Jerry started in his role as the Assistant Director of Special Education as we were in the midst of COVID. He learned the complexity complexities of remote learning, hybrid models, and even how to return everyone back to school while keeping the service levels for all I E Ps in compliance. He's constantly looking for opportunities to equip staff members with the knowledge and skills necessary to navigate special education services while fostering a culture of continuous improvement. He's an active member of the Salamica Quanis, the Cataragus County Head Start, and a dedicated football coach, which is evident as he walks through the halls and the students stop him as he tries to get from one spot to another. I want to thank Jerry for everything that he does to ensure that our students have what they need and that the staff have what they need to make sure that our students continue to grow and succeed. Congratulations, Jerry.
See, I will prepare, yes. What I probably wanted to say is I wanted to thank the board. This is why now you've granted me tenure. Um, as president of school council, I was an administrator. I could have not have better place to land or find a home. I love coming here to Salamander. I love working in this district with the support that you get provided. I work in many districts. And I tell people all the time, you don't know how good you got it until you find a place. And this is the place for me and I want to thank you all for trusting me to take care of our kids and to provide me the support. So. Yeah, so thank you. Appreciate you all and I love working with you. Thank you.
See, I believe that is everyone. I saw Stacy Clayson and Carrie Kloss were here a little bit earlier, but I knew that they had to step out. They are to have some reassignments. Was anybody?
Sure.
Sure.
Stacy Clayson, I think she's a little bit struggling at Seneca as a teacher. We're really excited. She started her career at Seneca and she's looking to get back over at Seneca and bring her science expertise to Austin.
And Carrie Kloss is transitioning from first grade to math interventionist. She has had a passion for math for actually most of her career and will now be able to share that with students in a different way. The other transfer or reassignment, so to speak, voluntarily done within the district is Rachel Wolf. This is Wolf is moving from the, we're gonna talk about that or that, oh, for, is moving from the classroom where she teaches Seneca to the Native American curriculum team. So she will be able to, say, institutionalize some of her knowledge in an even deeper manner as she begins to affect the curriculum for our students pre-K through 12. So we're looking forward to having her in that new ball and welcome her as well.
Okay, congratulations to everybody for their. Okay, congratulations to everybody for their transfers of where they want to be. Again, we do love it when uh our staff are going to grow and transfer and transition into new roles to help engage and spread their knowledge. So congratulations to all of them. Um, underneath our board information and reports, additionally, we have our first uh policy reading, uh sixty-one ten in our upcoming event. Uh, we have uh our next Board of Education meeting next Tuesday right here. Uh, our senior walk is Wednesday, the 12th. Uh, moving update is the 13th. Uh, we do not have school on the 19th, it is in June. Um, and then the last day is the 25th, so it really is coming right up. Um, so with that, I am gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, motion by Dale, second by Carrie, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.